One moment, folks.
There you go. You're on.
Thank you. Oh, you don't have one? You never got it?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Nolan. Thank you, Mr. Truman. Folks, it is 7:40. We are called to order. If everybody could please rise and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And roll call, please, Angela.
Amy Funahashi.
Here.
James Fee.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Attorney Heil.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here. Mr. President, I note for the record, we were in executive session from approximately 7 o'clock to approximately 7:35 with regard to personnel issues.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. Mr. Truman, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. First up for council consideration would be the approval of the April 26, 2022 meeting minutes.
So moved. I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. Nolan, seconded by Ms. Funahashi, to approve the April 26 meeting minutes. Any additional questions or comments from council or the public on the minutes? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Next up, we have a mayoral proclamation pertaining to Gun Violence Awareness Day. And with that, I will turn it over to Mayor Beth Jacksir.
Great. Thank you. I guess a couple months ago at this point, the group Moms Demand Action reached out to me and I think all the other mayors within the county to present us with the proclamation, which I have here. It's pretty much just declaring the first Friday in June, which this year is June 3, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. It's typical for me to read the whole proclamation, so I apologize in advance because it's a long one. So here I go. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the borough of Bridgeport, Montgomery County. In proclaiming this, we honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and declare that, as a community and country, we must do more to reduce and ultimately eliminate gun violence. Whereas every day in America, more than 200 individuals are shot and wounded and more than 110 are killed by gun violence, resulting in an average of nearly 16,000 gun homicides every year, Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. In Pennsylvania, there are an average of 1,628 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 12.4 deaths per 100,000 people, thereby having the 31st highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. Gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in more densely populated areas, with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. Communities across the nation, including Bridgeport Borough, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. Gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence, with more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. Mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe, and are dedicated to protecting public safety in the communities where we serve. Support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns out of the hands of children and away from people with dangerous histories. In January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. On June 3, 2022, what would have been her 25th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. The idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, choosing this color for how it symbolizes the value of human life. Hunters wear orange in the woods to protect themselves and other hunters. Anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3, the first Friday in June 2022, to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And in doing so, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, while encouraging people, while encouraging gun ownership and secure storage to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, Beth Jacksir, Mayor of the Borough of Bridgeport, Pennsylvania, with the support of members of Borough Council and the citizens of Bridgeport, do hereby proclaim the first Friday in June, June 3, 2022, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Bridgeport Borough. By proclaiming this, I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to educate one another, put action items into place to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence, and to honor and value human lives. And with the proclamation being read, I would just like to take a moment for today's violent gun event at an elementary school in Texas, where 14 small children were brutally murdered and as was one teacher. So if you wouldn't mind just having a moment of silence. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor Jacksir. Moving on, for council consideration, Resolution 2022-33, appointment to the Borough Council at-large seat vacancy.
It's been a few years since we did one of these. Do we need a motion to open? These aren't nominations.
Motion to open nominations.
There will be a motion to open for nominations? Okay, so let's start there. I'll make a motion to open the floor for nominations.
I'll second.
All those in favor of opening the floor?
Aye.
Thanks. And the floor is open for nominations.
All right, then, I will make, I'm making a motion to nominate now, right? Okay. I will make a motion to nominate Saba Alzaid to the council at-large seat.
I will second that motion.
Are there any other nominations before we close the floor? All right. I don't see any, then I'll make a motion to close the floor for nominations?
Second.
Thank you. All right, then, we only have one nomination. All those in favor of nominating Saba Alzaid to the council at-large seat vacancy? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any public comment on that? All right. Seeing none? I did, yeah, I did them reversed. That's okay. I got a little flustered. Thanks, everyone. That's unanimous. Saba, congratulations. Ms. Nolan, did you have a few words to say?
Yes, you did that, the order in reverse.
I was excited.
And you kind of flustered a little bit. I'm excited, too. But I just wanted to say that I have been working with Saba for the past two years on the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And in the time that she has been on the committee, she has contributed her ideas and talents to help support the borough's sustainability goals. She and her husband have chosen Bridgeport to make their home and to raise their two adorable children. And they saw in Bridgeport, what we already know, is that Bridgeport is a great community to raise a family, and it really is just a great community, period. With her marketing and communication skills, as well as her direct involvement with various boards of health and wellness-related nonprofits, Saba brings a host of well-rounded skills to Borough Council, and I look forward to serving Bridgeport with her.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan. Moving on, next up would be the oath ceremony for the at-large seat and Saba Alzaid. So if you could, please, Mayor Jacksir.
Awesome. I don't know if you don't have a book. Right hand up? I'll go with right hand up. Thank you, Mr. Bello. All right. Just repeat after me. I, Saba Alzaid.
I, Saba Alzaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Move the podium out of the way so you guys can stand in front of the flag. Thank you, Angela.
Oh, yeah, the family, too, of course.
If you'd like to sit up here for the duration of the meeting, you certainly can. If you'd like to, if you'd like to, if you'd like to wait, you certainly aren't, you know, mandated to sit up here.
And you can vote if you're comfortable, but you don't have to vote if you're uncomfortable
All right. Congratulations and welcome aboard, Saba. Next up, we have the announcement of the 2022 Dr. Vincent Morales Scholarship winner. And with that, I will turn it over to one of the scholarship committee members, Councilwoman Diane Gundrum.
Thank you. We had several well-qualified and deserving applicants again this year. Decisions are never easy. The committee has chosen Mary Sharoud as this year's recipient of the Dr. Vincent Morales Scholarship. Mary is a lifelong resident of Bridgeport and will graduate from Upper Marion this spring. Mary has been active in a variety of sports teams and clubs at Upper Marion and is a member of both the National Honor Society and the Spanish Honor Society. She's also a third-place winner in track and field. Mary's strong academics coupled with a variety of athletics and dedication to community service. Mary will continue to represent Bridgeport during her college career and beyond. Please join me in congratulating Mary Sharoud, the 2022 recipient of the Dr. Vincent Morales Scholarship.
Maybe we can have her to the next meeting for a presentation?
And the plan would be to bring Ms. Sharoud here for a formal presentation publicly next meeting, yes. Next, for council consideration, Resolution 2022-34, appointing a new member to the Bridgeport Civil Service Commission.
Yes, I would like to appoint Mr. Mike Hayes to this position.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Nolan, to appoint Mr. Mike Hayes to the Bridgeport Civil Service Commission. Any additional questions or comments from the council on that appointment? Or the public? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous. Thank you.
Very good. Next up, for council consideration, Resolution 2020, excuse me, 2022-35, Authorization of Notice of Intent to Award to BreezeCon for the Memorial Park Trail Project contingent upon the satisfactory review of bonds and insurance certificates. Members of council, in your packets, you will find the bid tabulation results for the bid package that was assembled and advertised by Gannett Fleming. As you will see, BreezeCon, located, headquartered at 314 River Road in King of Prussia, is the apparent low bidder with a total bid amount of $309,267.95. And as it has been a couple months since we last discussed this and got authorization to advertise the bid itself, for the edification of the audience, I will pull up a map of In short, this project seeks to install a winding walking trail along the slope of the Memorial Park Hill, leading down toward Grove Street. The walking trail will include amenities such as park benches, solar-powered lights, trash receptacles. Additionally, the project calls for the installation of ADA-spec curb and sidewalk to be installed on the, at the foot of Memorial Park's hill on the side of Grove Street that currently has no curb and sidewalk, ultimately leading up towards Bridgeport Elementary School, where there would be a thermopainted crosswalk leading across the parking lot to the left of the PDF, ultimately heading over and connecting to the trailhead that leads to the footpath that takes you to Bridgeport, the back end of Bridgeport Elementary. And this is Resolution 2022-35, Notice of Intent to Award to BreezeCon for the Memorial Park Trail Project.
Mr. Truman, before you move forward on that, if you would like to amend the resolution to also include the notice of award and that way contingent upon the satisfaction of bonds and insurances, we can then move this project forward without another motion from the board.
So, Mr. Phillips, to clarify, this would not just be a notice of intent to award, this would be notice of award as well?
Correct.
Okay. And we can, we can make the subsequent change on the resolution and get that executed sometime later this week? So, thank you, sir.
And that's legally okay to do? There's not?
Perfectly fine.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't. I'll make the motion contingent with, contingent on what Mr. Phillips said.
I'll second that motion. I think this path will be a nice addition to our park.
If it's okay, I'd like to abstain from this vote, just because I don't feel I have enough information.
Thank you, ma'am. So we have a motion from Mr. Heil, seconded from Ms. Funahashi. Any other commentary or questions from the council or from the public? Yes, Joanne, please.
Joanne Gedzikki, G-A-D-Z-I-C-K-I, Grove Street, 641 and Bridgeport. I just want to clarify with Roger as far as the street width and two cars being able to pass on the street.
Sure. The final street width from curb to curb will be 26 feet. And what that will, that will allow, your average car is six, six and a half feet wide. So part, having parking on one side of the street will still leave adequate room for two cars, or two trucks, actually, to pass.
Okay. And I'm sure other things were taken into consideration as far as the snow removal and the upkeep, okay? And then I know that in the letter that, not a letter, an email that was sent out, Mr. Truman, you noted in there that they agree to help, or you agree, the borough agrees to help us with that Hur Street entrance?
I, it would be, I know from a personal standpoint, it'd be my absolute pleasure to work with the park board on that, and I'm sure, while it's never come up for a formal vote amongst council, I can assure you that council will ultimately be supportive of that as well.
Only because, I mean, I witness that on a daily basis, and I don't understand the logic behind it as far as connecting to that, when the access that most people want is to the playgrounds and the ball fields and everything on top of the hill, and there is a sidewalk at the bottom. But I don't want to rehash all this and give everybody a headache, as long as I know that the board will get support with the things that we do need, and that's that Hur Street and Ninth Street parking lot.
I think that you and I can agree wholeheartedly that the, that secondary entry into the park, the Hur Street entry, is in, is in sore need of some TLC. I think we could put a lot of capital into beautifying that entire area and giving us two parking lots that, that both the park board and the borough are, and I know residents, most importantly, are proud of.
Thank you.
Ms. Gedzikki, before you sit down, can we clear up who owns the pavilion on the side of the hill?
The parcel or the structure? Or are they one of the same?
Both. Do we know?
Plus a coin.
Ms. Gedzikki had contacted me today on a couple of issues, and this came up, and this is as good a time as any to resolve it. The same thing with the entrance we're talking about. Who owns what down there? And I, and I know, Keith, you responded to me today about that, and I don't recall the specifics of who owns the, that entrance. I think we own the road.
Mr. Bello, I actually have that information.
Yeah, please.
So, so the area of the pavilion is owned by the borough.
That's, that's my understanding.
Yeah. And up at the top of the hill, on the Hur Street end, there's a parcel there that is owned by the community fund. And then there was also another parcel that's a private residence that's behind there, where we've all parked for 40 years, is actually private property.
But the borough owns, has the road leading up Holstein? Am I correct?
That's correct. And there's a, it's, it's kind of wonky, but there's a series of paper streets that run all through that park.
Right.
I would assume the ownership would be either to the borough or default to the adjacent property.
Okay. So if we clean that up, it would necessarily have to be a joint project, anyway. Okay? And then the other thing Ms. Gedzikki raised, that they've been maintaining the pavilion, and if it's not their property, why are they maintaining it? And I think that speaks to a lot of the issues that have slipped through the cracks. One of the reasons for that is that we don't have our representation on your board. And so I would, I would like, I would encourage you, you tell me when.
Okay.
No, I'm saying, when do you think we could have representation on your board?
Give me a month.
That's fair. Everybody else think that's fair? Okay?
But that's recent. There's always been representation.
Yes.
And we were under, we were definitely under, we always got the repairs for the pavilion coming to us. And sons, you, sons and sisters of Bridgeport actually got the roof done on the pavilion. So, I mean, there's, there's things that the community fund has taken care of that, apparently. And one of the reasons that we weren't doing that parking lot, I mean, it was up to us to do it, so maybe the borough, they are going to have to be a joint project.
Yeah. And I think, I think the borough is willing to do that because it benefits everybody. Most, most importantly, it benefits Bridgeport.
That's right.
And I've been an advocate, I just want you to know, that I've been an advocate for mending whatever divide there has been between the two boards. And I think all of us could do a better job at communicating and reporting to one another. And if we work together, we're going to, we're going to resolve way more issues, create a park that's more beneficial to the borough, and the excuses can stop.
Amen. And as you know, my past experience has shown that I was always for the borough, and that's why if everyone agrees that this sidewalk is going to help the borough, well, even though I don't see it now, maybe I will see it in the future.
Okay. And again, I think this is, this is a very positive appearance this evening. I'm glad it went this way. There was a lot of concern on both sides as to how this would go, but what I'm hearing you say is, let's all get in the tent and get things done.
Yes.
All right. And 30 days, we'll have representation on your board, and we can proceed with talking about that Holstein Street improvement. That benefits everybody.
Yes.
And there's no good guys and bad guys left.
I hope not.
All right.
Thank you.
And I can provide you with all that parcel data, and I would recommend that, that the borough and the community fund go through some sort of a reverse subdivision or something to combine a lot of that and take the ambiguity out of what's there.
That makes perfect sense.
I think, oh, and Ms. Gedzikki, thank you very much for your comments. Any other public comment? We saw, we saw, are on commentary for this resolution from the crowd? All right, then we can call the vote. Seeing no other comment, all those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we do have one abstention, for the record, from Ms. Alzaid. All right, then that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Very good. Finally, for this portion of tonight's proceedings, for council consideration, approval of bills and salaries for the May 2022, for the month of May 2022. Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Nolan, to pay the people, pay the bills and salaries. Any other comments from council on that or the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pay the people, Keith. Thank you.
That concludes the manager, solicitor, engineers' report portion of tonight. We can now move on to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business that any members of council wish to discuss this evening? Seeing none, are there any committee reports to share this evening?
I have a report for the Sustainability Committee. Our last meeting earlier this month, we had a very productive meeting where we month, we had a very productive meeting where we helped an interested resident, or I should say, a resident who was interested in developing a Bridgeport Garden Club. So, we are, so this new club is open to all residents who are interested in learning more about gardening, helping with beautification projects around town, or even sharing your own knowledge and skills with other like-minded residents. This brand-new club will be having their first meeting Thursday, June 2nd, at 7:00 PM at Frosty Falls. So, again, please come on out and join the Bridgeport Garden Club.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Nolan. Any other committee reports?
I have one. So, this past Saturday on May 21st, we had our first movie night for the summer. We showed Sonic the Hedgehog, and it was a big hit. I think we had a pretty good turnout. You know, lots of kids enjoying themselves, and I hope the turnout remains the same for next month. So, next month, movie night will be on June 18th. And then the week following that, we'll have the Bridgeport Carnival. So, lots of fun stuff coming up for the community next month. Thanks.
Do we know the movie for the next, for the June meeting, or the June movie night?
I don't think we just...
I think that we are leaning towards some sort of Ninja Turtle.
Oh, that's right. We took a vote at the movie, and that was pretty popular.
Okay, very good. Seeing no further committee reports, we can proceed to the mayor's report. Mayor Jack Seer.
Thank you. Just got a few things this evening. On May 14th, my office hosted a mental health fair, which helped begin what I hope is the first of many events on mental well-being, suicide prevention awareness, opioid addiction awareness, and much more. So, please stay tuned for future-related events. And if you'd like any information from local resources to learn more, please reach out to me directly. This past Saturday morning, I hosted my monthly office hours. And just to change it up a little bit, I'm likely going to be offering office hours on a weeknight evening next month, just to try to get some more people who might not be available on Saturday mornings. I wanted to thank everyone who attended the Bridgeport Fire Company's annual flea market on Saturday morning. I was able to go before office hours, and they had some really great vendors, and it's only with the help of our community that they can thrive. So, thank you. Last Friday evening, I attended the Bridgeport Elementary School's Spring Fling Event, which was a huge success and tons of fun for everyone who was in attendance. So, I just wanted to thank the PTC for inviting me. It was a really exciting experience, meeting some parents and Principal Bickart. So, thank you again. I wanted to remind everyone that the resident needs surveys that were sent out to all Bridgeport residents are due by next Tuesday, which is the end of May, if you'd like to submit one. And last, but certainly not least, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize LGBTQ+ Pride Month, which takes place during the month of June. We don't have a June meeting until a little bit in, so I just wanted to say that now. For those of you who identify as LGBTQ+ or are staunch allies in the fight against hate against this group, I just wanted to thank you for being yourselves and contributing to Bridgeport's welcoming and diverse community. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Jack Seer. Moving on to the chief's report. Chief Beretta.
Good evening, everyone. So, some recent activities over the last two weeks. We had some theft of packages 900 block of Bush Street. We arrested one subject during, in progress with that, and he went to prison. We had some thefts over between the 21st and the 23rd, Grove, Prospect, Coats Street, Third Street. Prospect was a theft of a bike. Down by Third Street, we had theft of tools from commercial vehicles, theft from motor vehicles. We had some call, people calling complaints overnight of people looking in the cars, and our guys are out ped-stopping and contacting people. So, we, again, talk about, there's very few places or vehicles that are broken into per se. They're usually rummaged through that are unlocked. Keep anything that's apparently valuable out of your car. If you have to, lock it in your trunk. Lock your doors. Don't even leave changeout that's visible. For somebody that needs money, then, you know, they'll want to go in and rummage through your cars. So, if you happen to see, or if you have Ring camera footage of anything, when you're reviewing your cameras for something you think might be helpful for the police department, please pass it along. Give us a call. On the 11th of June, we're going to have a bike event, bike safety event, with our partners, the Bridgeport Elks. That's going to be from 3:00 to 6:00 PM here at the Bridgeport Borough Parking Lot. So, thanks in advance for the help from the Elks and the support of the community to keep our kids safe. Usually, it helps with helmets, and I know that we're going to have some assistance perhaps with some donations and some bikes. The same day, there's a Race for Peace event. For the last four years that I've been here, we've been involved in the Race for Peace event, whether it's walks against gun violence in West and North Philadelphia, or it's with our holding events and creating dialogue in places where senseless violence is going on and lives are lost. So, the most recent Race for Peace event will be held at the Upper Marion, in Upper Marion Township, at the King of Prussia Court, and that will be there from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. They'll probably have somewhere between 10 and 15 police departments there, so they can create some dialogue with some folks. It's usually a pretty well-attended event. We will later on have our own event here in Bridgeport in connection with National Night Out. Car striping, we have a new car we received, and we're waiting for parts, as everyone else in the world is, for this, issues with supply chain stuff, but it's being striped right now. You'll see a lot of activity, and I've seen on Facebook that people noticed that there was a lot of police activity yesterday and in the past week with clicker or ticket. So, we probably had about 30 vehicle stops for various offenses, whether it's seatbelts, safety, traffic lights, stop signs, blocking the intersection off of the Calb Street. So, we know that there's a lot of construction going on between Norris Town and Upper Marion and off of the Calb Street. So, we're trying to keep it as safe as we can. You'll see people out of West Fifth and the Calb Street. We have informational signs that are being the message of right turn only from 7:00 to 9:00 A. and 4:00 to 6:00 P., and it's being transferred from one side of West Fifth Street to the other. So, we're informing people, and we're also doing some contact with police officers, so that we can cut down on the traffic flow and the accidents there. From the railroads, they're going to be conducting some maintenance work from May 31st through the 6th through June 1st at the Depot Street Crossing. So, the Depot Street Crossing will not be a through street. It'll be closed for those dates, and there'll be adequate markings and diversions of traffic from each side. You still have the Mill Street, excuse me, crossing that will be available, so it shouldn't be a big problem. That's, we also, the police department's finishing up our annual firearms training, and we're also doing defensive tactics, which is to help try to keep potential violent conflicts or taking people into custody safer with less injuries and less use of force. So, I want to thank our friends over at East Norton for their assistance with some trainers, and I had a lot of positive feedback from the officers that are attending these training. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, chief. Moving on to new business. Are there any items of new business for this evening? All right. Seeing none, we can move on to open forum and announcements. Are there any announcements?
One announcement I wanted to make sure everyone knows about is on the morning of June 8th, Frosty Falls is going to be recording something for Fox 29, and they're asking residents to come out. So, I don't have all the details, but follow Frosty Falls and Laura, and I'm sure she'll come out and show us some Bridgeport pride.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Hyall. Any other announcements? I have two that I would like to make. Number one, to dovetail off of Councilwoman Funahashi, to reiterate, the Bridgeport Carnival will be Tuesday, June 21st until Saturday, June 25th, starting in just a few weeks. It's going to be 6:00 to 10:00 PM the first four nights, and 3:00 to 10:00, the final night, Saturday evening. Hope everybody comes out. We will, it'll be the same carnival vendor as a carnival provider, amusement provider that we've had in the past. And we have another great lineup of local musical acts, including AM radio and several more, along with the Beer Garden, sponsored by or operated by Conchahocken Brewing Company, as well as the winery, the wine aspect of it, from Cardinal Hollow Winery. And secondly, I wanted to touch base or make an announcement regarding the hometown heroes banners project. And this is for anybody in the audience here, or anybody listening on the recording on the website, or Facebook, or YouTube. I know that there are a lot of families that are very anxious to, that have placed their order, and they're very anxious to see the memory of their family member, the veteran who fought for this country, emblazoned on a banner and hung somewhere in the community prominently and proudly. The most recent batch of banners that came from the manufacturer came without mounting hardware. So, and furthermore, as much as the borough and Public Works and former councilmember Bennett, who has spearheaded this initiative and done a fantastic job, as much as we are all eager to get them up and complete and fully assembled on the streets, you know, we have a multitude of other projects to juggle. And we are also faced with this current lack of hardware, mounting hardware. So, we're hopeful that we're looking at a temporary, sort of a temporary solution to the mounting issue for the time being. The delivery date is not determined at this date. We know it won't be before Memorial Day, sad to say. But we're looking for alternatives to get them up as quickly as possible. And just want to ask that any eager families, just be a little more patient, and rest assured, we will have them up soon enough. So, thank you. Seeing no further announcements...
Mr. Truman, on the, sorry, on the carnival, are we doing ticket pre-sales again?
We are, we are not doing pre-sales.
Mr. Truman, just one other thing.
Chief Beretta.
Mr. Truman, Memorial Day services. So, at the War Memorial, we don't want to forget that.
Thank you.
This is what it's all about. So, Bridgeport has a fine history of supporting armed services and right outside my office, and then, of course, right there at Fifth Street and the tracks into Calb Street. So, thankfully, the Bridgeport and the Catholic War Vets will conduct Memorial Day services at noon on Monday, May 30th, at the Veterans Memorial Park at Fourth and the Calb Streets. So, if anyone can make it, come back out. It's always great to remember those who've sacrificed so much and hope to see you there.
All right. Thank you, Chief Beretta. Moving on to public comment, are there any members of the public that wish to speak this evening?
Hello, I'm Katie Fulmer, K-A-T-Y-E. I live at 207 Mill. The last time I was here, I asked about the emergency management system, and I was promised approximately two to four weeks we would have an announcement. I have not heard one yet, and hurricane season is coming.
Expect, on the, I shouldn't say expect, there will be, on the first meeting of June's agenda, a resolution and/or a vote to engage a vendor to begin the process of signing our residents up with a reverse 911 program. So...
So, we have the program, and then we just...
We have a contract delivered. The Solicitor's Office is reviewing for, for, you know...
He and I just talked about it today. So, I just wanted to jump in and say that because when people come in and say, oh, well, I haven't heard from, oh, we just did, he really is doing it, and we just talked about it today.
I believe you. I just wanted an update, and I don't know if there's anything that we can do from like, like preparedness, from like a prevention, or not prevention, because we can't prevent a flood. But there's a lot of things about like tips and tricks and stuff that I've seen online about how to prepare, especially we've been starting to see tornado warnings and things like that. So, I don't know if there's any kind of something we can learn together.
Does the emergency, does the, the emergency committee, I forget the acronym for it that we have in town, pardon me, do we have access to some materials?
So, the EOC, we packed, we actually, I guess it was last month, I think it was emergency prepared this month, and we put out a bunch of pass-along things from the FEMA that were talking about just those kind of things. How to read the maps, how to understand about what flood levels are, the color codings of the maps. I know I put out something probably about five weeks ago when there was a surge in the schuful. So, yeah, we're doing some of that. And if anyone has an interest in serving with the Emergency Operations Committee to get a little bit more training to help us prepare, it's all training. So, we would welcome some more people to come out with us. But we'll continue to put out some additional things, and you'll see things put out on the borough page and the Facebook if there was something pending in between when we have this and when we have the official notification processes in place.
And the official notification's not just going to be on Facebook, right? Because I know that there are people, like even my husband doesn't have Facebook. Like, I tell him all the time about things that are happening, and he's like, how did you find out? And I was like, I saw it on Facebook. He doesn't have Facebook. So, I just want to make sure that that stuff's being distributed also in alternative methods.
Katie, whenever we, whenever we have a public announcement, it is, understand that we are limited in how we can disseminate things. You know, 90% of the population doesn't get the Times Herald on Sunday anymore. So, print advertisement ain't what it used to be. Frankly, Facebook, it does cast our widest net. But we never limit ourselves just to Facebook. It'll always also be posted as a news or announcement bulletin piece on our borough website, which if you've subscribed on the borough website as a subscriber, that generates an email that goes out to, that's a mail email list in and of itself. We have a separate email list of folks that have volunteered their emails throughout the years that we conduct routine mass emails called Borough Blasts. So, they are three basically internet-based means of notification, in addition to things like the VMS sign that's sitting out there, you know, that flashing the carnival dates out there. So, we are limited. We don't have a town cryer anymore, but we try to pump it out any method we can.
And I would just recommend, please connect with the chief if you want to be involved. It's real, it would be great to be, for you to be involved. It is always good that you ask the question, so don't feel, don't have, no, because I know you were tiptoeing up. It's not a bad thing at all. So, like, I wish more people would, because it's easy for those things to get missed.
Yes.
And I think that all of us would welcome, like, if you see from yourself or your neighbors, like, oh, I would like you to do this, please bring it up. We're not close-minded to any of it.
Well, even like with the tornado warnings, like, I have coworkers who live in Sioux Falls, and they had really bad tornadoes last week. So, like, when we got the tornado warning after last year and the flood, I take it seriously. And I was like, how do I prepare for a tornado? So, she was able to help us, and I had a bag packed and everything. And we knew where we were going. But I don't know that everyone always knows that. So, I think if, I'm happy, chief, to volunteer some time and join that committee and learn and help and, you know, recruit some others.
Great. If you can take, if you have a time, or whenever you're not at work, or whatever else like that, give me a call or email me, and then we can set up a time to come back in and talk with some other, some other folks that were helpful and see about getting some, some training. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Any other public comment?
I just want to say, that's been on my mind all morning, I can't believe that the mayor had a proclamation for gun violence awareness day planned for today, and then there was the worst mass shooting since the last school that was shot up. And I have kids in this school. And it's, it's just, those kids are like, my son lost another tooth today. The kids that were shot were kids losing their teeth. There are kids who like, just play Minecraft all day. And if you know someone that's... There are kids who like, just play Minecraft all day, and if you know someone that's got guns in their house, for some damned reason, an 18-year-old, he wasn't, there wasn't no security there, he went through security, crashed his car and did it. There was, it was not like it was a free-range thing where no one was around to stop him. There were good guys with guns there to stop him, and he still did it. And if you know someone that's messed up, that you know, that you fear is violent, talk to our chief wherever you are, talk to the teachers. And I was looking at my phone, because during this meeting, the death toll, of course, went up from 18 to 21, and, you know, three, three teachers, all those teachers love those kids, and just please, don't be silent, that's all.
Thank you, Tony.
Well, thank you, Mr. Heil, and on that note, if, if nobody has any further comments, council could certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Or adjourned. Thank you, everybody.